We are at seven fifteen here. So, welcome everybody to the Norton Planning Board's meeting of Tuesday, April the sixteenth. Uh, as posted, this is a remote participation Zoom meeting only. So, thank you, everybody, for joining us. Uh, for those viewing who'd like to, uh, view via TV, would like to join via the Zoom app. The meeting ID is six three eight nine two nine one zero six zero. There's also a phone number should you wish to dial in directly. For future sessions, please feel free to email questions for the board ahead of the meeting to Brian Carmichael, town staff. Uh, and they can be entered into the record or submitted to the board in advance. With that, I'll call the meeting to order and I will start out by welcoming back Paul D. De Zeppe, who is the, uh, Planning and Economic Development Director for the Town of Norton once again. Uh, so Paul, thank you for, uh, joining us again and hopping on the meeting on your first day. Uh, we obviously, we obviously know that you've seen all of these discussions in depth, uh, in the six hours that you've been on duty today, so.
Bringing back good memories. Memories, anyway.
Yes, but, uh, we're definitely glad to have you back with, uh, back with us here and, uh, looking to having continued discussions as we move forward here. Um, so with that out of the way, we're gonna dive into our agenda this evening. Laura, we do hear your microphone. Thank you. Um, we don't have any bills or warrants to approve or, um, minutes to approve at this time. Um, so diving into our agenda, again, this is carved off from the agenda we had originally planned for last week, but there was a question in terms of us meeting, open meeting law requirements. Um, so, we're gonna start with, um, an update we have from Serped. Um, provides an update on the MBTA communities, um, parallel work that they've been doing for the town. Uh, so I see a number of people from Serped on the call. Um, so if you can dive right in, we'll go from there.
Yeah, thank you. Hi, uh, my name is Robert Cabral. I'm joined by Chris Welsh, uh, and so, hey, so, um, for those of you maybe on, on television, um, who, who don't know us, we have worked Serped, the Southeastern Regional Planning and Economic Development District. We're the regional planner for Norton. Uh, thanks, Chris, for pulling, pulling that up. Uh, so alongside Norton, uh, we've applied for and received two grants from Massachusetts Housing Partnership to provide technical assistance to explore potential MBTA multifamily districts. Uh, the short version of that, for, again, for folks just tuning in, uh, it's kind of, it's at no cost to the town. Uh, we're just, we're, we're looking at sort of the level of possibilities, the way that Norton and, and even those other communities throughout Southeastern Massachusetts can, can look at compliance with the requirements for multifamily districts through three A. Um, so really, what, again, what that means for Norton is that this technical assistance, we want to find the right path for Norton to work with the planning board here in other stakeholders in town. Uh, and, and just find what the best way that, that fits with, with the way that the town wants to see itself develop, that, that we can do that. So, quickly recap of where we left off. Um, I think it was, is it on here? It's November something of last year, twenty-fourth, fourteenth, something like that. We, we were at this planning board and we presented, uh, because Norton has not really any directly suitable multifamily ready districts. We looked at just a townwide, a range of locations and we produced this map that you see here. And we highlighted really three sites based on a range of criteria, proximity to transit, walkability, avoiding, you know, critical natural features in town. Uh, presence of key utilities. And the first one, and if I remember correctly, I think the board did respond most favorably to this Mansfield Avenue site. Uh, the reasons for that, um, proximity to the Mansfield Station. I think there was some discussion of, of, uh, the smaller parcel size for, of a portion of this that, that we liked. Uh, but of course, the presence of utilities. Next site we highlighted was the western portion of Route one twenty-three. Uh, similarly, this one's close to the Ataburo Station, but it did lack some of those utilities. And last, and if I remember, this one was sort of the, the least popular option was the Norton Center option. Um, and while there's a lot of quality of life, uh, amenities here, um, you know, doesn't have that access to the transit and some of the other things the board was looking for. So, we're happy to cover any of these in, in more detail and talk a little further about them, but just to kind of, again, kind of outline the contours of, of what we think maybe would be the best next best with discussion. Uh, as we move into that next phase of achieving compliance, uh, we would wanna like pick one of these sites or another site or anything, uh, you know, I've heard discussion of, of the Rita Barton site, that that one is a possibility, but the, the challenge would, if we did pick that one, for example, would be talking to the Commonwealth to make sure something like that's not viewed as too onerous because of the remediation potentially that would be required. So, that's why it's not on these three key sites. But again, if there's another one, we'd be happy to look at that. Um, but we'd pick ideally one of these three sites or another site. And then we want to hone in on that exact boundary, which parcels that we really want food, um, and, and to find sort of that shape. And then we would also wanna look, if you don't mind scrolling down a little bit here, Chris, um, the mechanisms that we wanna consider. So, what do we mean by that? Um, we had here forty R, uh, Paul, Paul reminded us actually that the road to compliance using forty R is, is long. So, if we, you know, it's a good ready-made tool and it's a great tool for compliance, but we would probably wanna talk to the Commonwealth and see what, what that runway looks like. Um, in the context of three A, if it's too long, uh, it might not be possible or it might be challenging at the very least. What does that leave us for this? Another option, something like a local, locally initiated overlay district, which is something many towns pursue. It's not as ready-made, it doesn't have the cash payments associated with forty R, but it does provide greater flexibility and control. Uh, so if we did look at a local overlay district, for example, some of those things we'd want to discuss to I just kind of a list here is, do we want to have like an inclusionary component? I was thinking of, um, providing a, a, a remedy for subsidized housing. I think you can do through a local one. Ten percent requirement, that number is kind of worth keeping in our heads because it keeps pace with the current SHI. You know, we all, I think, know, or many of us know that Norton subsidized housing inventory is around ten percent. So, if we make a district that produces more units and it stays at ten percent, that's sort of, so it's be treading water with that number. Otherwise, you would lose ground. Um, and of course, all the benefits of providing subsidized housing for those in, in town who, who want a place to live, you know, uh, and, and need something at that price point is, is, is another, is the number one great reason to, to do that, too. Um, open space considerations, how do we wanna think about open space in town? Um, do we want additional uses alongside multifamily buy right? That's that key requirement that we have is multifamily buy right, but do we want to allow mixed use, for example, or commercial alongside it? We need to just provide that clear avenue for multifamily housing buy right. That's the goal of the district. But it's not to say there aren't parallel tracks that one could follow. We could give every developer the option of doing mixed use and multifamily. We just don't wanna foreclose that option for multifamily only. Um, so that is, that's something to consider. And then, you know, we, we've been ruminating, and I'm not sure what folks on the, on the board have discussed in terms of that smaller parcel. That's, that's one that we haven't come across in their town, but trying to like make sure we're being thoughtful about that, if that is still a priority. Maybe looking at something like sub-districts and moving together in a sub-district, the smaller parcels with a set of controls that applies for that. Because the obvious risk that I don't think we quite got into in the previous discussion, because there was a, a lot of, a lot that we had to cover, is how do we not incentivize a developer to just buy four or five of the parcels streaming together and propose something large? So, are there ways that we could set up controls with a sub-district of smaller parcels and then to achieve compliance, let's say we, we do look at the Mansfield Ave, we'd probably want to put something like the, um, with the Rose Brothers Parcel, which is probably around six acres or so. And maybe the rules for developing that is different, like the maximum size for the building that could go along there in terms of units would be bigger to keep up with that fifteen UPA. And let's just hypothetically say you have several one-acre parcels, you could have a, I don't, I don't know, you have to like look into this, but maybe sixteen, uh, unit max on those or something like that. So, you keep up with the fifteen UPA on that. So, just some, some stuff to think about, it's just an example, but some districts could achieve many, many things if we wanted to, to do something like that. Um, so, uh, with all that considered, one of the mechanisms, especially again, if we're using a locally initiated, even if we're doing forty Rs, this model bylaw the Commonwealth has provided is a great resource. It does just tell us sort of, uh, the fact of the things that we know will be allowed uh, in, in a great starting place. That will be three A compliant because it provided this bylaw. So, we can, you know, make this available for everyone in town who wants to learn a little more about this. You know, can't say it's the most fun thing to read, but it does provide a lot of information. And so, that's gonna be maybe our starting place. Um, and just as a reminder of, of some of those requirements, I, uh, I'll kick it off to Chris, who can remind us of, of some of Norton's obligations under three A. Just again, to frame, frame the discussion up that we're probably gonna have.
Yeah, of course. Thanks, Rob. Uh, for those of you that haven't met me, my name is Chris Welch. Uh, I'm with Serped. Uh, as Rob said, I'm gonna quickly go over Norton's obligations under section three A. Um, for those unfamiliar, uh, in today's call, um, section three A is of Mass General Law Forty A. Essentially, what it's saying is that, uh, an MBTA community shall have a zoning organs or bylaw that provides for at least one district reasonable size in which multifamily housing is per, or as permitted as of right. Um, so essentially, what the major aspect of the law is saying, and it's important to note this, um, before going into any further discussion, is that this is not a mandate to build. This is a mandate to create capacity for multifamily housing. Um, so the expectation is that overnight, seven hundred and fifty units aren't going to be developed. It's more of creating that capacity to be able to produce more multifamily housing. Um, so in Norton's context, uh, it's considered an adjacent community, um, uh, so some of the requirements that go along with that include, um, a, a, a need for, as Rob stated, uh, fifteen UPA or fifteen units per acre. Uh, a minimum land area of a, of a district needs to be at least, uh, fifty acres. Um, multifamily needs to be permitted as of right, uh, with no age restrictions. Uh, so basically, how they get to the seven hundred and fifty unit calculation is, um, for every one acre, you need fifteen units, so fifty acres. The math on that gets you to seven hundred and fifty units. Um, so, um, as Rob said, we have a few different, um, avenues that we can look at, that we very much like your feedback on, uh, including those three sites and including any other um, sites that you might have in mind. Um, so, yeah, and, uh, as a result of getting this funding award through the Massachusetts Housing Partnership, Serped has conducted an analysis of the town zoning, uh, existing zoning, I should say, housing stock, demographics, and on-the-ground development patterns, um, which we will be summarizing in, in different materials that will be disseminated as a result of the work that's done here. Um, yeah, so, uh, Rob, correct me if I'm wrong, I, I think we kind of leave it open to the board now to discuss, um, their thoughts on this?
Yeah, thanks, Chris. If, if any, if you want us to kind of jump back through or dive into any of things we went over in more detail, or if there's any particular part of this discussion that resonated with, with you all that, that you wanted, um, clarification on, but yeah, just, just let us know how we can chime in and answer any questions or, or help with, with, uh, the decision-making process here. Uh, but I would think probably the best outcome is to get as close as we can, if not outright. I don't know, again, where you all are at. It's been a while. But thinking about which of those three districts or, or a different one that we would wanna pursue, um, but again, it's really whatever works best for Norton.
So, just to, to clarify, so the decision point that we're looking for today is general agreement on a district. And you said that above that there were some other things for the town to consider in the zoning mechanisms and consideration section. Um, so, are you looking for a decision from us and any of those, any of those specifically, or is that still a keep thinking about those as we move forward the process?
Hey, the first thing you mentioned would be ideal. Again, I'm, we're not here to put pressure on the town to move any faster than you all want to, but that would be, we could certainly run the background and, and, and get some things going if we, if we know there's a district that we liked. And I, and I did, again, I'm not sure it's changed, but I feel like I remember we it felt like it was close to your consensus at the last meeting. So, if you guys are comfortable discussing that first, we can see how far this discussion takes us and we can, again, talk a little bit about pros and cons of, of some of those more nuanced points, too, if we, if we wanna get into that.
Sure. Yeah, I don't know if you wanna go scroll up higher to show the districts themselves and just, um, obviously, that's the Mansfield Avenue one. And then western portions are at one twenty-three, and then the other one was the center. Um, I think that, uh, I think our, as you mentioned, um, I think our original preference was towards the Mansfield Avenue one in the initials, in the meeting we had a few months ago. Um, does anybody have any additional comments, questions?
I would definitely say let's stay away from the center and pick either the one forty or the one twenty-three. I think that's what makes the most sense, and I think that's if I remember where we were last time we talked about it.
Yeah, I agree. Avoid the center completely. It's a historic district. It's gonna get the most, uh, like resentment from the town. Uh, near the Mansfield line where Tweeter is, is perfect. It's already pretty established as a busy area. It's next to the highway. Uh, I think that's ideal. The chart we end is somewhat reasonable, but it is, in a way, a, another historic district of town and it's, I'd hate to see the district change too much. But, yeah, the Mansfield end is perfect.
I just wanna restate, too, for the public, I'm not sure if there's anyone on the call or not, I, I haven't looked, that the state is forcing this down our throats. Um, it's not something that we do in our own provision. Um, the state is mandating us to do this by a certain point. And there are heavy, heavy penalties if we do not comply.
And there are other, there are other municipalities, I think Milton specifically is one that is, uh, playing that game of chicken with the state right now. Yes.
I give them a lot of credit.
I, I had a question real quick. Uh, as far as the multifamily, are we allowed to uh, only permit a multifamily up to like four units in one building, or does it have to allow it to continue to any level?
I think that's a really good question and one that I was spending a little time, because I remembered that you, in particular, had that question about, you know, looking at, which I think is a good, like, you know, planning principle to look at dense, smaller parcels. Um, again, it, it really depends what you guys want and what, what's best for Norton, but you know, it's, it's, it's a good inclination to, to me, in my professional opinion. And one of the ways that, that what you're thinking of seems to be a way you could approach it. I, I gotta dive through and make sure it's not. But we didn't really see anything when we did a review today that prohibited that, and that's that same idea of like the sub-district, if we look at sort of the left of the page where there's, there's some of the smaller parcels here. Yeah, if we cap that at, again, it's a hypothetical, we say it's a one-acre parcel. Let's just say sixteen units per acre on those parcels, a sub-district A, and then we've got that Rose Brothers Parcel there right across, um, one forty that you'd have a different set of controls there and go permit a larger building that's more contextual of sight. We, I, we, we have, we can talk with the Commonwealth to make sure that's a permissible thing and review some, some other districts that have, that have had, um, you know, approved, approved plans. Some of them have like a lot of sub-districts.
Is the most, is like the, the limit for the possible smallest lot, would it be like three units on six thousand square feet? That we could reasonably fit that?
I think I understand what, what you're vetting out with this question, and it, it would be, it's a little complex, and I think the answer is sort of like threading the needle on what we think will give us the best outcome for most parcels in the district. Some would just become non-conforming in the district, if you get what I'm saying, like, uh, in one, one municipality is a more concrete example, they want the larger, uh, minimum lot size. And the lot, lots that were under, let's say, seventy thousand feet became non-conforming because they're only fifty thousand feet. A similar thing may happen here. Uh, or, you know, if you just get too nuanced with looking too many sub-districts with too many controls, it won't be allowed. Uh, one district would have to be half the size, one sub-district would have to suck, half the size of the total three A compliant district, if that makes sense. Because what they don't want is spot zoning a bunch of areas around town, um, that, or wants to feel like a district or a neighborhood.
I would say my, my, my closest analogy to it would be the Norton Grove off Reservoir Street, where that's mostly five thousand square foot parcels. And at two units per five thousand square foot parcel, that's MBT, the, it has the number of units, but it doesn't have multifamily. So, the next step up would be like three units on six thousand square feet. And if we made a district that had that, that requirement, then it would fit the standards we already have, like, you know, fifty feet of, of frontage and not parking. And it's three stories high, possible, and residential zone already. Uh, if that's, if that's sort of the way we could take it, you could do like a triple decker, which is already sort of a Massachusetts style of architecture.
So, many of those are Norton, but, uh, yeah.
I, I mean, I, if there's a way we can put a break at three or four units as opposed to allowing it to be a, an unlimited amount of units, uh, I think that might be more fitting. I, I think most of the time, I prefer to see triple deckers as opposed to uh, twenty-four or forty-eight or seventy-eight unit buildings. I, I am not sure how far we wanna, if we're gonna put the district anywhere else in town other than right next to Tweeter Center, we might want a variety of building sizes.
Okay.
When there are other controls you could explore there, sort of, you, you a little bit of some, is even a height, a height limit on buildings, for example, that, that's totally allowed under uh, writing it through our own three A guidelines. Some towns don't have the fire equipment, for example, that would make it easy to deal with a larger building or, or, you know, things like that. So, there, there's a, there's a range of controls we could explore and present to you and, um, some options.
Yeah. Chair, could I?
Yes, please.
Had something? Um, so one of the things, I'm, I'm glad Rob's bringing this up because one of the things we could look at as well to get to Steve's point, too, is look at our use table for residential units and essentially, my recollection, I haven't gone back and dived into it, but my recollection was we really just had a category multifamily. This could be an opportunity for us to create new uses, new use categories for housing, like a triple decker, like quads, small apartments, there's, there's something out there called missing middle housing, and we could look at that and start introducing those y, those types of housing and tie that to some density of some sort. I think that could, could, you know, we could, you know, it could help us place where the appropriate styles of how, or, or the types of housing and the densities. It might give us a little bit more, give us some more tools in the toolbox rather than, you know, the few choices that we currently have on our zoning bylaw.
Would that need to be some? We, okay, if you scroll down to the zoning mechanisms considerations section, I know that there's discussion about what is this? A base zone, is it an overlay? Is it a smart growth overlay? If it's an overlay district, that's not necessarily something that we would be adding to our use tables. It would probably be something that, that'd be if we made it a base zone, correct, Paul? That would be the
It, it, it would certainly apply under if we did it as a base zone. There's a benefit if we were looking at it as an overlay, which is, oh, like in the Mansfield area, um, there's a lot of commercial land up there, which, um, you know, we, we'll wanna talk with you all later about, do we still wanna have an opportunity to preserve the right for a property owner to develop commercial? If we do this as a, a new zoning district, we might be removing commercial land from our inventory. So, there, there's trade-offs. I don't know yet what, what, now, we have to work, our team has to work together to figure that out. Um, and what, you know, what trade, we wanna be able to present to you the trade-offs of whatever options we come up with.
Can I try to perspective? Uh, uh, over the past last year or so, I've come up with some constructs, uh, when can we actually like have a good sit-down meeting to go over the potential of how to design this sort of, this district? Like, like, where could I show my own? I know we have a zoning recodification coming up. But if we wanna talk specifically about the MBTA zone, I, I'm not sure where I present that because that's not in our charts yet.
So, one, again, I'm, I'm still pretty new coming back, but that's a great question, and I, and maybe one of the answers, maybe an answer to that is, is a few years ago, when we were developing the Village Center Core, we actually had a working group with the, a combination of the planning board and, um, ZBA. In fact, Alan was the ZBA rep who helped out. And that's, uh, so that, but that working group met prior to the full planning board. So, what the benefit of that was, was we, we workshop, workshopped it, made a number of edits, and, you know, by the time we got it to the full board, um, they, you know, it was pretty well flushed out and the full board made fewer, very few changes from that point. So, we could be thinking about it in terms of of the, um, a working group. And in fact, one thing that's important, um, is we need my, me, uh, and, and our, our, and, and Serpent, we need to come up with our, a timeframe because this does need to be adopted by the end of the year and has to go to town meeting, has to go to the board before that. So, we need to start soon coming up with some timeframes. And this is, this will be an, a, important decision to figure out in the timeframe, do we have a working group and set aside some time for that group? So, um, you know, again, we're, I'm kind of going on the fly right now, but that, what, I think that was successful a few years ago when we did it for the Village Center Core, and it might be something we wanna do again. And that would be an opportunity for you to weigh in.
Okay, yeah, because we are doing a, a recodification right now. Like, again, I, I started with the town right, right before you took off for a little while. Glad you're back, actually. But, uh, I reflected on the work you did, and I, I use that as sort of a, a measure of what could be done. And that, that's where I kind of use that as a way to well, how far can we push new districts? What do we need? What do we need for over overlay districts? So, I, no, I've been trying to study up on it as best I can. So, it like some sort of, uh,
My only other two cents at this point would be, uh, I was always looking at this like an overlay district would be the most sensible thing to do. I don't think a new base zone is gonna work for us, in my opinion.
I think it would be the cleanest way to, to not only within just professional opinion, there's a all the ways to work, but I agree, it would be a clean way to conceptualize this and a clean way to present it to the public in a way that's digestible and understandable.
And just from, uh, I don't think that this board has looked at forty Rs previously. Um, obviously, I'm sure there's eight levels of nuance to that, but, um, the difference between that and a local overlay district being in a couple of points?
Yeah, of course. Uh, the forty R and, and Paul, please, if, uh, if you wanna jump in on it, it is because it's a very good chance Paul may know a little more about these than I do. Uh, they're, they're really a ready-made district. The main, one of the main things is you could, I think, in the context of three A, have actually twenty percent SHI because that's the the built-in boilerplate number. So, that would be one of the main advantages is that you can have that higher SHI number, provide housing, get a, a, a variety of price points and more for people in need. Uh, it comes as sort of ready-made densities. It's sort of a boilerplate district. And then you do, you do get, uh, cash payments from the Commonwealth. Like, Littleboro has used some payments from this to, uh, build a playground, I believe. So, so there are obvious benefits, the con, and again, this is where I think Paul would really know a little more than me, having been on the ground. I've, I've helped out with a handful of these, but Paul has, has seen through that. The runway is very long. There's a lot, there are other requirements to, to work with the approval agencies for, for yards, smart growth districts. So, you have to meet certain, um, typical stuff of those smart growth sort of criteria that it, that is connecting to all the things, it's smart growth. I think close to transit would be a pretty good indicator of, of that it has a chance of success, but, um, yeah, that, that there's build-outs that you have to do that are separate and distinct from just complying with three A. You have to comply with the forty R program. So, that, that puts another onerous set of sort of criteria on this. So, Paul is kind of ready-made, boilerplate, gives you a little higher subsidized, we, we do with a district like this. And I'll, I'll join the choir people that are appreciative of Paul being here. I think the point you brought up about missing middle housing is a great And I'll join the choir people that are appreciative of Paul being here. I think the point you brought up about missing middle housing is a great one because so many people who. Housing at a variety of price points, not just on the subsidized side, but naturally current can do that. But yeah, it gives us a little way to get, get some of that stuff, but taking that at a cost.
Uh, and, and Chair, if I could just add one thing to this too with the forty R. And I was working on one in my last position. Um, this would have been a great tool for us to consider for this and I wish two years ago when I left that I had. Brought this up, but I didn't know as much about forty Rs back then. The challenge is timing. Again, we, we know by statute, we have to get this adopted by the end of December. With a forty R, we could never meet that. Uh, for example. As part of the forty R adoption process, before it goes to town meeting, we would have to send all of our material up to the state. And they get four months to review it. And then get back to us. And it, and it's actually even can be longer than that because if you submit. Let's say on May first, May second. They're gonna back end it to the end of May anyway. And then count from, from that point and they have a hundred and twenty days. And, you know, we could ask for an expedited review, but, you know, we can't count on it. And besides that, there is with forty Rs, which is a great tool, and I think it's something we should be thinking about. Down the road for another part of town. Um, there's just a lot of that application that the state submits because they give the towns funding. There's a lot of calculations that have to go in that we don't have to do here. But a forty R again is a great tool, as, as Rob mentioned, the, the town actually gets funding for. Eligible affordable housing units and then when the units actually get built, we get additional money. Plus with a forty R, you actually have design standards that you can put in and, you know, which can result in a better project. We don't have those here. So it, it's just, we're not gonna get to, there's no way we would get to December with forty R.
I think that's a fair point. And, and I think characterized perfectly, we could very well ask for an expedited review. We have at Serpent some of those relationships. The review process for a three A compliance is ninety days, so, you know, uh, Steve, to your. Question like, what's the timeframe? You know, we wanna get something there, we're working backwards from the warrants. So we do wanna move pretty soon on this stuff. Um, we wanna be thinking about one or. In the case we did do forty R, if we thought we wanted, you know, really committed to that, wanted to do it. One or both of those review timeframes, we wanna work with inside, uh, for something like this.
So it sounds like a local overlay district is our path forward there. For the large scale mechanism and then it turns into that. The next question of other things we should consider.
Have to, uh, answer today if you want some time to ruminate on them, it's a good working group thing or we could present a bylaw, you could be like, yes, no, yes, no. Tell them that because we thought of it, but those questions are the big ones. I think we, it's great that we can walk away today with thoughts on, on. The bigger thing like you mentioned.
Yeah, I mean, I think. Shouldn't have an affordable component, but that feels like a yes in big bold letters, otherwise. We're gonna put ourselves under ten percent super fast. Um. Even though we're treading water with a ten percent. Um, local zoning requirement. And then. Yeah, some of the stuff I feel like. It's probably pretty straightforward, but the rest of it, we may need to go into a little more detail on our end. Did any members of the board have any additional comments on either? The selection of the proposed district and/or the path forward with the local overlay?
I thi- I think the overlay is the right way to go about it. It seems fitting and we can change where it's located in the future. How we wanna move it around, if we wanna spread it.
And just, you know.
And I would definitely like to focus on the mixed use aspect of, of it all.
Yeah, just with the, uh, the local overlay, I think that makes sense. You know, like the idea of it being in the, in the north or near Mansfield. And maybe we just, when we look at how we wanted to find this particular overlay, maybe we just usually can under the forty R. Just so, yeah, we, we get an idea what, what that looks like and so if we decide that this makes sense for a future project, we already have an idea what it looks like.
That's a great point too, I think. Uh, one of the things that we've. Asked, uh, the Conor off about, uh, and Paul brought the design standards. Because we design guidelines, you know, it's something maybe we submit a one-stop floor down the road or something like that. Cuz I don't believe that those would have to be adopted at town meeting. I think those are a site plan review tool. And so, um, we can pursue those after we adopt the district, for example, for something, uh, Eric, to your point, that we wanted to look at, adopting so that. Forty R type stuff.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, I'm not hearing anything. Um, just took a browse, anything else that you wanted from the board this evening or have we given you enough for your next steps?
Um, if you guys are uncomfortable, um, with what I have on my notes, uh. With us proceeding with yes to local overlay. Uh, we'll write up our first, the sort of idea of this with an inclusionary component. We will explore mixed use as a, a, a use alongside it. And looking at how we can incorporate other components of a forty R, if that sounds good to you all, we can, we can run with that.
Sounds good to me.
I think everybody's looking at the camera and nobody's saying no, so I think we're good to go there.
And, uh, I heard some stuff about a, a working group, um, we are happy to, to accommodate that and, and work that into our process. We welcome it completely. Um, so however, it's best for you all, you know, um. To, to set that up, we can, we can integrate that into our process.
Okay, yeah, I think that's something that we may explore within the board and then we would, um. Reach out to you through, um. Brian and or Paul to that effect.
Great, thank you.
Dive into nitty-gritty of, uh. All the design standards and all of those things.
Sounds great to me, thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, everybody from Serpent. Okay. Um. We do have one more item on our agenda, which is execution decisions. I'm gonna push that one to the end unless anybody has any objections. Um, since we do have two other applicants who are joining us on the call this evening. Um, the first one is an ANR endorsement for ANR dash five for one ninety-two ton avenue. The applicant is Michael Dean and I believe I do see him on the, on the Zoom call here. Um, so Mr. Dean, thank you for joining us, um. If you could please just give us, uh, just a narrative of what you're looking to do here, um, and. We can evaluate this A and R application. Um, you should have the ability to share your screen, otherwise, um. Brian, I'm not sure if you wanted to pull up, um, the plans for this, uh.
Yeah, if you want me to share my screen, that's fine if I have the ability.
You should have the ability with the, uh, the green share button with the arrow there.
Okay, I'm gonna do it, try it now.
Go for it.
Do you see my screen?
Not yet. There you go, it's coming, there you go. Okay. We see it, thank you.
Is that back over here? I don't see it though.
Yeah, no, we, we do see it, um.
Can you see my phone?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, so thank you, thanks for that. Uh, my name is Mike Dean with D and L Design Group, uh. And, and you had just mentioned, there's an A and R, A and R in front of the planning board tonight. It is referred to as one ninety-two Taunton Ave. The planning board may remember this project. It is located, Taunton Ave is located here. In Old Taunton Ave, in this area here. So, like I said, the planning board may remember. The project there in early two thousand twenty-three when there was a special permit submitted to the planning board for this parcel. And earlier than that, uh, in May of two thousand twenty-two, that's what's up here now, labeled as first A and R plan. You can see that there's, this was approved before we got involved with the project. Um, and you can see that's the, that's the creation of the four lots, lots one, two, three and four. Frontage Taunton Ave and Old Taunton Ave. Signed and approved in May of two thousand twenty-two. That plan was essentially, was the genesis, so that's what was behind the special permit that was submitted to the planning board and ran through. Early two thousand twenty-three, so I've just moved to the current A and R at this point. Um, do I have to hit share screen again or can you see that?
Hit move for you, you're good.
Okay, perfect, thank you. So as you can see down here, that's what's, that's what's in front of the board tonight. Count this area, I have it labeled current A and R, obviously the my R doesn't have that on there. You can see it's similar to lots one, two, three and four, fronting. On Taunton Ave and Old Taunton Ave and you can see how they're configured. So, as I had mentioned, the A and R, the first A and R set up the four lots, we submitted a special permit to the planning board. Went through that process, addressed comments, concerns. Uh, for that special permit, the special permit was issued in two thousand twenty-three, so this is essentially cleanup work. That, that adjusts these property lines to meet what was approved through the design and approval process of the special permit. Um, zoning, things of that nature were reviewed through that process. The lots have adequate frontage, adequate area meets the zoning requirements, we're just cleaning up the property lines to, to meet the. The approved special permit that was issued by this board.
Okay.
We submitted it back in, I believe, the twenty-first of last month, so.
Okay, and we. There wasn't a site plan that delineated these lot lines as part of that special permit?
Yes, there was a special plan, yes, there was a plan that, yeah, that morphed into just, these are the property lines, so. This is an A and R plan, approval not required, just showing the property lines, that mirror the special permit plan that was approved.
Okay.
We're just looping back and cleaning that up. It should have been done sooner, but this is where we're at, so.
Okay.
Would you like to see the site plan that was approved? I have that as well, but this is. Like I said, it's a. Proving not required, it meets the zoning, but I can certainly show you, here's the design plan that was approved here. There it is there. Same thing, that just shows the houses, the grading, the drainage, the, the driveways, things of that nature, but that's.
That looks much more familiar, okay.
Yeah, so, so like I said, it's the A and R, you don't show all the other stuff, the other information on them. You don't show geography, the wetlands, you, well, you show the wetlands in this case for the A and I because it's a zoning requirement, but. So that's the approved plan there. At the special permit.
Okay.
Was based off of, and then this is the current A and R here.
Okay, that makes more sense.
Okay.
I was trying to, I think the note at the top of lot two. Made me think that we needed to have access to that area of the lot for, um. For residents, but clearly that's a very narrow, uh, throughway there.
Yes, so here, yeah, so here is the design plan. The house is shown up here for lot two. House here, house here, house back in this area, and if you go back to the first A and R that I recall, the first A and R.
Yeah.
Same thing, the house is up front on lot two where the existing house is, you see my cursor here? So never, never to access back there, even in the first scenario. Lot one is always gonna be chomped out and accessed back here, lot three is up front, lot four is up.
Okay, that makes more sense now, but I apologize for. Uh. My lack of brain power earlier when I was looking at this.
Nope, I'll. Absolutely.
Any members have any additional questions, uh, for Mr. Dean here this evening?
I, I got a good question, um, that, that skinny connection between the two lots, h- how wide is that?
It, it's just over twelve, just over twelve feet.
Okay.
And this also shows the remaining land in the back being heated over to the town. Which, that actually says it on this plan because that was one of the criterias or the special permit, uh, conditions versus. The original A and R, it just said that it was a separate parcel, not a building lot due to no frontage, but at that point, it didn't. That, that A and I didn't go through any special permit. So this, this directs, you know, this ties, makes it a little tighter in my opinion.
Yeah, and this was the plan that we settled on as opposed to doing something like a, a larger subdivision using the entire lot.
Oh yeah, we went through that whole process with all the, you know, this was. There were some minor adjustments to these property lines, obviously the, 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 the adjustments were in this area here, you know, one. And two, a little bit of three, but, um, that was, that was, um. Yeah, that was all taken into consideration and when we went through the special permit, we had approved the alternative analysis, had a cul-de-sac road, things of that nature. Would have used up a little bit more land for the lot areas if you built the road, etc. We went through that whole process.
Yeah.
While in line with the master plan, things of all that nature.
Okay.
I had another question real quick. Um, the, the part of the, the frontage that goes along Old Taunton Ave. Uh, there's a historic rock wall. Is that already removed? Is that being removed?
No, that's not going to be touched. That was one of the, that was one of the comments that came early on in the special permit process in which we. Adjusted with the common driveway, uh, added that into the special permit, so there were two special permits, one for the, for the, uh. Tank of dwellings that were being proposed and the common driveway. And that was one of the concerns of the abutters and then I think that resonated with the planning board as well through the special permit. And that wall is not going to be touched other than the small section where they, where it was required to loop the water line.
Awesome. I think there was a historic tree in that, with this site plan as well, if I'm remembering correctly.
Well, there was some discussions about a tree and where it was, that, there's a dead one out there, over near the, uh, common driveway area. And there was some discussion even before. I think, um, the pre- previous planner wanted some documentation. Before officially signing and have, or having the planning board officially sign the, the special permit. Uh, the, 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 the trees, the, the trees along that wall are not gonna be cleared, but. You know, so I don't know about the historical tree, but I do remember there was one where it was if it, if it was in the right of way or not. Then it needed an additional permit cuz it was a scenic road, I believe, but.
Yeah, it was a scenic road tree.
Yeah.
Thing where the, we had to notice on the tree, I believe, or, uh.
Yes.
For the bylaw, yes, that was, uh.
And had to be advertised and everything. That's for it to be removed, that was that dead tree.
Yeah. Okay. Any additional comments, questions, concerns from members of the board to the approval not required that's in front of us?
And make a motion to endorse A and R five.
And we have a motion to endorse by Ann and a second from Laura. Any further discussion? Okay, I will go through the members here for a vote. Uh, Alan, I will start with you.
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Laura? Wayne? Jim?
Yes.
Did I miss anybody? Eric, Eric, I missed you.
Yes.
And I will vote yes as well. I was, the zoom, the gallery shrunk on me, so I was scrolling through and I missed it, I apologize.
Will you sign this next week's meeting or do we have to come by and sign it?
Um. Let me see, um. Mr. Dean, is there any land transactions that you're looking to have this recorded at the registry in the next? Week or so and not, not a tight timeline right now?
We are on a tight timeline, but I don't, I'm not sure a week matters. They're trying to get some finance and then some land things going because like I said, we should. They should have done this earlier, but if you can't do it until next week, what am I? They should have done this earlier, but if you can't do it until next week, what am I gonna do? But. If you could swing by and sign it, it'd be great. I think the other. A and R plan only had one signature on it, I think, if I remember.
Yeah, it's um, I think that is, yes, cause uh, the. The remnants of um some of our COVID era rules around for the board is the chair is a single signer.
Yeah.
Um.
Okay, I thought I had something else, cause sometimes uh the town planner can sign A and R plans, but whatever, whatever you guys.
No, that's that's my John Hancock, unfortunately.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, so I I will, I will say that um. Four members, if we have the ability to swing by town hall and sign this. Uh, once we get to four, uh, we can get it over to Mr. Dean, he can get it filed with the registry. Um, if we are not able to do that by the, uh, we all know we'll see each other next week, so. We'll do what we can to speed it along. Thank you.
I appreciate that.
Okay. With that one out of the way, um, thank you very much. Um, next item on our agenda is is discussion with uh Combine. This is an advance of town meeting. Um, discussing a road acceptance. Um, so just from a order of operations standpoint here. Um, our board is discussing it, and then it would go to the select board for. Placement on for a discussion at town meeting. Brian, is that correct from uh? Your perspective in terms of? The process here?
Yes, uh, we're gonna send the recommendation to the select board, and they'll have a meeting on it prior to town meeting.
Thank you. Uh, so I see Jeff Romeo here from Combine. Um, so Jeff, if you wanna just give a, just a. Um, a brief overview of what you're looking for, um.
Sure.
For us at this stage.
Thank you, so uh to to correct what you and and to elaborate what you're saying, but you you are correct, we are seeking. What's termed a non-binding recommendation from the planning board. Uh, and based on if that was approved and endorsed by you folks, then that would allow the select board to adopt what's called an order of layout. And once the order of layout is approved by the select board, then it's on. The town meeting uh number, either item number twenty-one and number twenty-two at the May town meeting vote. So this is for acceptance of the Leonard Street, uh, which we went over back at the October twenty-fourth meeting. When the divi- definitive subdivision plan was approved. Um, and we voted towards acceptance of the street and the release of the bond. So the only thing that's changed. Since then is the corrected terminology by town council. As well as we added the term, the word north. At the end of Leonard Street, so there's a clear delineation between the rest of Leonard Street. So that's what's on the plan in front of you, and you should have the Mylars uh from John Hellman available. Um, for signature uh if approved.
Okay. And again, this is just going back, this is go- going. North from Leonard Street toward the. Um. The Yale Building and then the other building at the end of the cul-de-sac, which has not yet been, um.
That that is correct, so here's the Leonard Street going back, there's four lots. Uh, lot one on the left, lot two, which is the Yale, uh, lot three, which is building twelve, and then lot four. So that is just that street, and that's why it's termed Leonard Street North.
Okay, and just from a point of information, the differentiation between this being officially accepted as a street versus a driveway. To those two buildings, um, the differentiation there would be specifically from what from your perspective?
Uh, well, as an accepted street, when we started off the process, um. Would be maintained by the town for the benefit of the Yale folks and for the building twelve. And was designed towards the uh standards of the roadway through the process and went through all the extensive uh inspections with all the various. Uh, department boards uh overseeing and managing the process. And in addition, we still have the warranty that's in place on the roadway, so that uh ends sometime late fall. But that's in place to oversee and maintain any issues that may arise.
Okay, thank you.
I guess one of my first questions, Tim, would be, do we have that documentation from town staff saying just what Jeff just said?
In effect, the the road has been constructed and it is paved correctly, not paved with candy canes?
Exactly.
Um, all that information has been submitted to every one of the department boards within the town. So DPW, uh, Sewer Water, uh, everyone else that was involved.
I guess I'm just saying, do we have something from?
State.
Highway specifically.
Specifically highway saying yes.
Okay.
Chair, uh, we emailed highway this afternoon, but we haven't heard back from them. But do keep in mind, this is a recommend, you're making a recommendation to the select board. Um, can I ask, uh, related to this, I know this was, um. There was a bond, I believe, on this, was the bond? Was the bond? Paul, um, we had a meeting in October twenty-fourth in front of you folks here at the planning board. So at that meeting, the definitive subdivision plan was approved. Um, you folks voted to move towards the acceptance of a street at that meeting. And release of the uh two million dollar bond. So all of that was done at that meeting on October twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-three. So to clean up, what we're doing tonight was kind of a, I guess, a cleanup by town council that recommended. The non-binding recommendation in the process to get this to the select board in order for them to get it to the town warrant.
Yeah. Thank you, Jeff. Um, Alan, to your point, I think that, I don't think that we're. There's not necessarily dispute that the road exists and the road has been completed, but just to, from a tying up the file perspective, are you?
I'm fine with that.
Going on a conditional basis?
No, absolutely, just anytime we have an applicant or whatever that says, yes, I went to that town, but you know, I just.
Yeah.
I trust nobody, I'm sorry.
Yeah, but I, I know we've gone back and forth with even with uh. The permitting softwares that we've had in place over the past twelve months, um, so that may also play a role in that.
So I guess, what is the motion we're looking to make here tonight?
I'm looking to. Endorse the proposal for the select board. Um. I believe that would be the the motion there.
So moved.
Brian, I probably can, okay, nevermind. You can correct me if I'm wrong on that motion before I accept it.
Seconded.
Brian, if I was at the correct action, was the motion to endorse?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So we have a motion and a second. Uh, is there any further discussion on the motion to endorse? Okay. Hearing none, I will go through everybody for a vote. I apologize, you have moved around in my screen, so it's just gonna be a little bit of chaos here in terms of who I call on first. So Steve, I will start with you.
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Laura? And I will vote yes. Um, and I believe I got everybody this time without skipping anybody. Okay.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Very much, Jeff.
Yep.
But have a good evening.
You too. So we had to come by and sign this, is that what I understood there also?
Yes, yes. So when you come for the A and R, come for the, for the uh roadway acceptance, we have them.
Two for one and drop Paul a gift on his new desk or old desk.
Yes. Okay. Uh, the final item on our agenda this evening. Um, is execution of conditions. Um, again, this is for SP two or three eight one and SPR dash three for three hundred South Washington Street. Um, Brian emailed out the draft decision. Um, for us last week, along with the agenda for this session. Um, has everybody had a chance to review it? Do we have questions, comments, concerns?
I have one question. I thought our condition, um. With standard conditions and then. Landscape and lighting plan being submitted prior to construction. I also had in my notes that um stormwater management permit was required. And I didn't see it, but maybe it doesn't need to be here.
Yeah, I just took it from my notes. I didn't have stormwater, so um, I just wanted to double check. But I can add stormwater.
Uh, in the, yeah, we do have that the. Building commissioner and our conservation director would. Observe the construction of the management systems at. Two different points. Um, obviously, the stormwater is required, but.
Yeah, I think the reason was because they hadn't gone to conservation yet. So it was kind of subject to conservation approving them, which would give them the stormwater management permit.
Okay, so that would be prior to construction?
I would think so, yes.
Anything else from everybody, anybody as it relates to this decision? Okay. I don't think we have anything further. Um. If anybody would like to call for a motion just to vote to approve this, that's fine, otherwise, I would. Consider it completed and ready for Laura's signature.
Do you want a motion? Sorry.
I think it may be overkill, but if anybody wants to make one, obviously, I would recognize it. Okay, if nobody else feels it's necessary, then I guess we would move ahead. Um, that is the final item on our agenda this evening. Relatively short and sweet, but this is also an hour that we do not have on our next agenda. Uh, which has this significant number of additional items to discuss. Um. So anything else anybody wanted to discuss in the open session this evening?
Motion to the gym. Seconded.
We have a motion and a second, so any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll go through the role one more time. Alan?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Laura? And I will vote yes. Thank you very much, everybody.
Good night, everyone. Good night, good night, everyone.
Have a good night. See everybody next week.
Thanks, Tim.
Bye.